We've got a quorum. We'll go ahead and start. So it's 7:01. I'll call the Brandon Select Board to order with four select board members present. Before we get to the agenda, I see the town of Brandon's here. Representative Jerome's here, Charlene Bryant, Brent Buehler, Bernie Carr, and I see a phone number 353-3458. Would that person like to identify themselves?
Sure, this is Sherri Vacarella.
Thank you, Sherri.
No problem.
Okay, so we're all on board. Is there a motion regarding the agenda that was published?
There was no approval.
Motion to approve for Mr. Coolidge, was it?
Yep.
Second?
I'll second it.
Doug Bailey seconded the agenda.
Doug Bailey seconds the agenda?
This is gonna be tricky.
Any changes to be made? I did have a request from one of the board members and the town manager to add 6C, item 6C, an executive session permitted by 1 VSA 313A3 regarding the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee. Is there any objection to that?
No.
If not, any other discussion on the agenda? All in favor of adoption of the agenda as amended by adding item 6C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Have you got two votes in favor there? Thank you, Dave. Okay, so that's unanimous. Item 2, approval of the select board minutes of September 14th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Giles. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Mr. Coolidge, any errors or omissions in the minutes as submitted? None noted. All in favor of approval of the minutes then as submitted, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
None opposed. That's unanimous. Item 3 is the town manager's report. Mr. Atherton?
Okay, so this is my report for the weeks of September 14th and September 21st. Segment 6, the concrete pores for the piers have been completed and the steel beams are scheduled to arrive within two weeks for installation. So we're actually a little ahead of where we thought we'd be at this point, which is good. Park Street, the bio swell construction has been completed. All the plants are in. Final road grading continues in preparation for paving to start next Monday, the 5th. That will probably go about four days, we're guessing. We got driveway aprons and all the other stuff to do. Other happenings, I received a $3,000 rebate from Green Mountain Power for the installation of the car charger. So that kind of put our cost down to zero, which is good. Attended the annual Vermont League of Cities and Towns business meeting via one of our video things on the 23rd. That was pretty interesting with voting and stuff. And we were breaking it up, so actually they're doing it in segments instead of the whole day now. Like the meeting was there, then we have a couple more this week, so I'll keep you filled in. There wasn't anything really big with the business meeting this year. The, it kind of all stayed the same as last year with what they were working on. I attended the Regional Transportation Council meeting on the 24th. The key topic was on the upgrade of passenger and freight rail plans with a presentation by Vtrans. I did again open up the conversation of including a rail stop in town. And the folks that were from Vtrans at that meeting were not there when I tried to do this a few years ago. So it looks like they're interested in it because they were complaining about low customers or passengers on the trains. So we'll see what happens. I told them Stephanie would build the station for them, so. But you know, it's good. We got that conversation out in the air again, so hopefully something good happens out of that. Rec news, rec department has enjoyed a successful relaunch of youth sports. Well, participation was expected to be lower, spirits are up, and numbers are surprisingly robust. 2019, there was 102 versus 89 for the fall season. Our rec football for grades three to eight is at zero as our commissioner made the decision to run program due to the state mandated modified rules. Starting Friday in October, we'll have kids cornhole, estabrook, and kickball in Neshoby. Cross-country running has yet to start and the possibility of a fall golf program is still being explored. The 25th of September 25th, Friday, saw the Carter Insurance Agency Pickup Concert hold the last concert in Central Park to provide some synergy with the Chamber DVA Brandon celebrates events. This was the last concert for the inaugural season. Many thanks to our sponsors, Chad Hayes of Carter Insurance, our performers, Emmerly Doty, Gunnar Tinsman, Kimberly Simmons, Kayla Passon, I probably didn't say her name right, and Mark Frazee, Hillary Collier, and our first performer and talent wrangler, Jess Crossman. This will become a staple of our 2021 drive-in schedule, so stay tuned. The rec will also be collaborating with Omnia on a safety program around outdoor exercise, subsidized by a generous donation. The rec will be offering reflective vests and hats for folks that walk, jog, run the highways, byways, and greenways of Brandon. $5 will get you a DOT certified reflective vest or a stylish reflective hat, both emblazoned with the Brec logo. Contact Bill Moore for more information before they sell out. And that is all I have this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Atherton. Any questions for the town manager from the board? Mr. Giles, anything?
Yeah, I just got two little things. I'm curious about what the final decision on the sidewalk spalling, or whatever they call that is. I had the pleasure of walking the whole length of our sidewalks during this last weekend during the celebration. And I just noticed that there are some sidewalks that were in better shape than others. So what's up with that?
So we don't have a final decision yet, Tim. Is what we're doing is they've done some test spots down on the south end Franklin Street, heading towards the Green Mountain Garage with a product that actually resurfaces it. They grind it and resurface it. And we wanted to do like a section of 100 feet to see how it holds up through the winter before we decide what to do next. So we did do a bunch of core samples on sidewalk throughout town to see if there are any issues with the concrete or not and what's causing this. So that's where we're at with that. We did just get our, we purchased sidewalk sealer for the town to actually put on the sidewalks. It just came today, actually. So you know, we'll start prepping those up once the rain passes through here the next couple of days and get sealer on the good portions and then we'll revisit this patch that we're calling in the spring, see how it's held up and see if that's how we move forward with it, so.
Well, thank you. That's interesting. The only other question I had was another one of these kind of general interest things. I signed up and attended the Vermont Roads Program that the LCT hosted this last week.
Yep.
Found it to be really interesting. And I was just kind of curious about this Rhodes Scholar Program and if our Rhodes Crew participates in it and just kind of what levels they're kind of at with that.
Yep, they've been participating, although I don't know if they've done any since COVID. But they have done quite a few of them. We tried to send them all up together. So yeah, they take advantage of it. And we've had folks from the league come down here too and Vtrans folks come down, you know, for some training stuff too. So yeah, we do take advantage of those.
They recommend in the training that in the wintertime, it's a healthy education for selectmen to understand the complexity of plowing and whatnot, to do a ride along. And I'm wondering if I could ride along sometime this winter?
Well, you can certainly ask Sean. I would recommend whoever plows Birch Hill Road to ride along with them on that one when it's snowing like crazy out. You'll understand what they go through.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that. Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, Mr. Giles. How about, I had nothing for the town manager tonight. How about Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, Mr. Bailey does. A couple of simple ones. And I'll ask them all at once and then you can answer them one by one, just so that you won't have to turn this thing so many times. One, I'm just wondering if there's any update on the town clock. It does seem funny when you're downtown and the clock's ringing and you look at it and the time's wrong. And I know you had said that the problems seemed bigger than what it was. So I'm just wondering if there's any update. Item 2 on the, our little parking lot, I would suggest that we start looking at some signage that would be bigger and bolder. They would talk about it being a municipal parking lot and letting people know the charger's back there because that's really cool. So it'd be good to have it used. And item 3, again, tonight I went over and looked at the town hall roof. So my question is, I was just wondering where does the water go that runs off that roof? Is it, are we gonna have a little leach field or anything like that back there or gutter? Or is the water just gonna fall off the roof and then run right back down the sidewalk and freeze? So that's my question.
Okay, fortunately I wrote these down, so I don't forget them. Town clock, we, there's definitely an electrical issue with it. Our normal clock guy came, he couldn't find the problem. Our electrician came and tried to diagnose it at the panel, which is, you know, in the basement and the clock's up high. He said it's something between. And he got busy after that. And actually, one of our Public Works guys, Dan Snow, his grandfather used to service that clock, I guess, years and years ago. And Dan used to go with him to do it. So he asked if he could take a shot at it and we said, go ahead. So hopefully we see what's wrong with it, but there's definitely an electrical issue with it. And it's somewhere between the clock and the basement. Parking lot signage, we can look into doing signage now. I mean, we've had a couple temporary ones up there. The chargers just went in, we're finished last week. They're not live yet. So we've got to turn those on and probably just do a little prep work in the parking area to make it accessible, so. And actually, I think we're going to see the mobile station activity start this week too. So might want to wait just until they get demolition done before we send Priuses back there, so. Town Hall sidewalk roof drainage. Yep, we are doing drainage on it. I'm gonna try to explain it the best I can, but I'm not the contractor. They're building kind of a type of a dry well behind, so be on the north side of the structure where the sidewalk is, where the roof, you know, pitches to, drains to. And doing perforated pipe along the perimeter to catch water. And then it'll daylight somewhere out in the front here, so it runs into the, into the catch basin that's out here on Route 7. So I, like I said, I've I can tell you more about it after it gets installed, I guess. And then we can take a look at it, so. But yeah, it's definitely not gonna run back into the building, so.
Doug says he has one.
My last one is not a question, but it's a, I wanted to give kudos to Bill. I really like the Omnia's safety collaboration effort for people running. It's getting dark early now and those vests will be really a good thing. So I think that's a really good one. And I want to recommend Bill for doing that. Thanks, Bill.
How about Mr. Coolidge? Anything over there?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, members of the public, I'm sorry, I was answering a question on the side. Members of the public with questions for the town manager or comments?
Yes, this is Sherri Vacarella. And I, I'd really be interested in seeing this detail on where the drainage actually daylighted just because of our proximity. It'd be nice to know if it's essentially on our property because we do own right up to the sidewalk in an easement that we signed with the town when we allowed y'all to dig up the driveway and install the sprinkler system. So we would really like to know that detail, if you don't mind, before it's installed. That's it.
So my suggestion would be to talk to the contractor when they're on site because he's the one that's gonna be able to tell you the best about it.
And why do we not have that information prior to the installation? It seems like it should be on a site plan or a survey should have been done so that way we have more information on the specifics on these locations.
Sherri, honestly, we're designing a roof for a sidewalk. It's not like we're doing the whole building. So we passed these plans around a few times. They were sent to you a couple of times. No questions were raised. So this is what we went forward with.
So what I received were not construction documents. There were no details showing this drain. There was only a note that stated there'd be crushed stone over vegetation fabric. To me, that's not adequate as far as describing this detail and it doesn't show it in plan. So I think this question is an appropriate question. It has everything to do with our proximity and I don't appreciate your response.
Do you want to know it?
So is it correct that the document that you've got from the builder is just the one page that you had sent to another party who inquired about it earlier in the week?
Correct. The one thing we had was the design for the roof and the walls, which aren't really walls, but that's it. Yep.
It seems like a fair request that the daylighting of the pipe is is clearly understood before it gets done. If Sherri has concerns about that, is that safe to say?
So what would you like me to do? Have the contractor draw up a sheet that shows the drainage plans on it right now before we install anything?
I think what I'm feeling like is that that as Sherri pointed out, before something actually happens, that there should be some understanding about what's going to happen, that way it's undoing.
You know, I guess my concern is, and it's too bad we're gonna do this in an open meeting and we couldn't sit in this conference room and talk about it with the Vacarellas. But when this issue first arose and I had the first set of plans that showed the roof, I sat with Tony and Sherri right in my office and discussed this about, well, do you guys want to see the plans? Do you want to be part of this? And the answer was no, they didn't want to be. So I don't know how much more I can include people when they don't want to be included when I ask for their suggestions or openness to being part of this project. This has gone on for over a year, so I'm not sure why this couldn't have been addressed earlier on. And I did send the revised plans to Sherri on, I think it was April 15th via email with a response that they were received, so. I'm not really sure what else to do here. I can ask the contractor to draw up the drainage and how it's gonna work. And it's, you know, what else do we want to do here?
Yeah, that seems fair.
If I may, this is Sherri, and I apologize, but I would be okay with just walking the site and understanding with the contractor and maybe yourself, Dave, that way we discuss it and that way we're all happy with the resolution. This is not necessarily an ask for drafting of something that's going to be designed on site, but I just wanted to openly say that I don't think the drawings that you all received, not necessarily talking about the individual that created the drawings, I just think that there needs to be details provided. And that's it. I'm not trying to be difficult here. I just want to know where it's going to daylight. That's it.
If you'd like to come over tomorrow or whenever you can, I can let them know first thing in the morning and I'm sure that they'd be happy to show you what the intentions are.
And Dave, do you want to be a part of that? Or would you just like me to walk with the contractor and then if there needs to be follow-up, then we can follow up?
If you would like me to be over there, I certainly can.
Okay, I think I would streamline the process, Dave, if you don't mind. I'm free anytime. You can just knock on the door. Sign would be great, whatever you would like.
Okay, I'll see what we got going on first thing in the morning.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
This is Brent Buehler. Do we have a contract price on this project or is it open-ended?
No, we had a not to exceed that the board agreed on at some point. I don't remember when we did. It was when we had the new revision and then there was concern that we wouldn't get it done before winter and that there wasn't funding and, yeah, so.
Do we, Dave, do you recall what that figure is?
It's like 50 now. It was like 37. Yeah, I'd have to look. I don't know the number off the top of my head, Brent.
Brent, is that fine? Does that answer your question?
Well, I can look it up.
Yes and no. Yes and no. I mean, we have the, I asked about the drainage too a couple of weeks ago. So I'm just kind of, you know, curious what we're actually getting for, you know, the price or whatever was quoted. And, you know, that's always been a point of interest, I would think.
Yeah, I'll send you the contract if you'd like to see it. It's not a problem.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you for thank you for that solution so that people get the information they're looking for and the project continues along. Other questions from the public or comments from the public for the town manager? Okay, if not, we'll move along. We can always have public comment on any agenda item. So item 4 is items not on the agenda and public comment and participation. Anything from the board tonight? Mr. Giles, anything that's not there? You're shaking your head. I have nothing. How about Mr. Coolidge?
Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Bailey?
No, no more questions.
Members of the public, I see we've got both of our state representatives here tonight. We've got the newspaper, we've got the Chamber of Commerce Director, we've got all kinds of folks. Who would like to say anything for the betterment of the community of Brandon? Bill Moore?
Let me unmute myself. Hello, I just wanted to read into the record a letter that's being submitted to our wonderful newspaper of note. I clicked on the wrong thing. Here we go. Thank you. And this is in my capacity, let me take off my Brec hat. My capacity as the chairman of the Brandon Independence Day Celebration Committee. After the Brandon Independence Day Celebration Committee was forced to cancel the 2020 celebration due to COVID-19 concerns, the committee voted to support the Brandon Area Chamber of Commerce Downtown Brandon Alliances Celebrate Brandon Event by rescheduling the fireworks portion for Friday, September 25th. We made the decision to move the firing location to a place where the greatest number of people could enjoy the display, downtown Brandon. Necessity being the mother of invention led us to a central location that allowed for folks within a mile, the immediate downtown, to see the fireworks from their home and our parks and the socially distant small groups. A huge thank you goes out to Chief Tom Kilpeck in the Brandon Fire Department for providing extra safety precautions around the new location before, during, and after the beautiful display. The Brandon Area Rescue Squad posted up with the fire department to provide an extra layer of protection. Our Brandon Police Department were on foot patrol and were engaged in some community outreach and protection as well. Tom and the entire crew from North Star Fireworks created an amazing display that was talked about all weekend long. Finally, the folks at Park Village have shouldered the load for decades, serving the town by hosting the fireworks during the BIDCC displays. We'd like to thank the families who were directly impacted by the fireworks sound being in their backyards for the first time here in downtown Brandon. Brandon is a truly great community and support ingenuity and our neighborly spirit was on full display this weekend. We'll see you back in downtown Brandon with the return of all our festivities to downtown in 2021. Brandon is happening now and if you have any interest in serving as a volunteer on the committee or on the day of the celebration, please email me at my be more at townofbrandon.com account. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Others tonight, I see Bernie has unmuted. Did you have some comments, Bernie?
I wanted you to hear my clapping.
Very good.
But also it was a great, it was a great weekend. There were so many good things going on. Traditional, perfect weather wherever we plan anything, that always helps. Lots of good comments, tremendous comments on the fireworks, wanting to have them there in the future too. So thank you, Bill, for sliding those in there. It really kind of highlighted the weekend. It was just a great weekend. So thanks everybody for all your support too, the town, everyone's support. We planned a long time for it and had to change it on the fly, so we're pretty happy with it.
Thank you, Bernie. Other public comment and participation tonight? Mr. Giles?
Yeah, I forgot to say during my opportunity. I noticed in the last minutes of our meeting that I was going to provide a Green Fleet report at this select board meeting. And I just wanted to give you an update that Jackie is gathering information for me and she asked for a few more weeks so she'd have time to finish a more important project. And of course, that's great. And so I'm looking forward to giving you a Green Fleet report at the next select board meeting.
Very cool. Thank you for keeping that on the not the backpack burner. Others tonight, anything else?
I have something, Sue.
Sue Gage, okay. And then Representative Jerome will be next.
I just wanted to let, well, everybody hopefully has found a ballot in their mailbox today. So all active voters were mailed a ballot on Friday, the 25th. Many of them arrived today. And we had a number of people bring their filled-in ballots back today. I wanted to let everybody know that we're gonna be holding the polling place on Election Day, November 3rd, at the Brandon American Legion on 550 Franklin Street. And it's gonna be indoors for people who want to vote indoors or to bring their filled-out absentee ballot to the polling place and insert it in the tabulator. But we will have folks outdoors if people just want to drop off their absentee ballot in the certificate envelope. People can bring their ballots back to the office between now and November 3rd if they want. If folks don't, if folks don't get a ballot within the next week, they should call the town office because we might have a bad address for them, so we can fix that and get a ballot out to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, for that valuable update about an important change to a routine in our civic engagement. Representative Jerome?
Thank you. Just a few updates and I'm sure if Representative Shaw is following me, he'll have more to add as well. So as you know, our historic legislative session ended on Friday, on September 25th. So we had been back in session again in August and we passed a $7.17 billion budget, balanced budget for the state. And it was a tremendous effort and I believe it's done, it's an excellent budget for Vermont, especially during this time. And in addition, we received $1.25 billion from the CARES Act for the state of Vermont. And Vermont was one of the top three because of the small, it's a small state qualifier that Vermont receives some of the largest amount of money per capita in the country. And I think we are benefiting, our people are benefiting from that now. So I wanted to just talk about a couple of things that happened that I'd like people, I'm hoping people will qualify for. There's gonna be an expanded hazard pay program. So that is for frontline workers who work between mid-March and mid-May. And there's a long list of people who are qualified for that, but it's essentially people who are deemed essential workers, retailers, grocery stores. And I'll be putting this whole list into my newspaper article this week. But people who worked during that time, if they worked between 68 and 216 hours, they would receive $1,200. And if they worked over that 216 hours, they would receive $2,000. So it's at least a recognition of people who worked during that, the early days of the COVID pandemic when we were all so fearful that they're getting some hazard pay. The other thing I want to talk about was a program called the Restart Vermont Technical Assistance Program. And that's, it's being administered through the Economic Development Corporations. So for our county, it'd be the Rutland Economic Development Corporation. And the businesses can get up to $3,000 of incentive of grants that'll help their business in a really wide range of capacities. So if there's any business in town that is interested in receiving a grant to help their business, whether it be financial assistance, financial planning, or even just some cosmetic thing to their business or some small thing that this this $3,000 grant can be of assistance to you. And I believe there's only gonna be 250 grants given to the whole state. So I'd really love to see a few more Brandon, Pittsburgh, or Sudbury businesses, particularly Brandon businesses, get some of that, get some of that money. And then lastly, the census needs to get in. And so I keep, I feel like I beat this one to death, but it's so important for our communities to have that census information submitted. So I'm gonna put something out there. I know this sort of September 30th date seems to be a little iffy now that the courts ruled that that was not legal. So I don't know if that's gonna go on, if we're gonna be collecting that data after September 30th. But if everybody in this room could get the word out that we just really, really need, that we really need to have that done, that would be terrific help. And that's, I guess that's it for now. So the legislative session's ended and we'll be going back. So the legislative session's ended and we'll be going back in January again and start all over. It seems like it's only going to be a short time before we're back there again. So thank you.
Thank you. I see Representative Shaw is ready with some follow-up?
No, I, uh, thank you, Seth, and I do, and thank you Stephanie for that report. The budget is a living and working document all the time. We go through it and there's so many nuances within the budget. It takes both of us to kind of keep up with what's going on and understanding what's happening. It's good for our district. One thing that's, that I was pleased to see, there's about $3 million in there for jump starting the CUDs that that held when it went over to the, to the Senate. And so that's, that's, that's a good thing for our CUD that now, I guess now is Goshen, Sudbury, Brandon and Pittsfordville. I think we have four towns involved in that, that Communication Union District.
And, and, and Hubbardton.
And Hubbardton too. So we're up to five towns. So we're, it looks like we have some steam moving forward with that. Another piece that might interest the board is that the transportation budget's fully funded and actually it's funded above normal levels. So your state type two highways, type three highway grants are funded, your bridge and cover grants are fully funded. A lot of those programs that oftentimes are under threat are funded, but if you go looking in the budget for the exact funding amount, it'll be difficult to put it all together because some of it's funded with COVID money. So, but it's, it's there. We received assurances that our towns are fully funded in that. We, we also, which is interesting, we provided another million dollars for the plug-in electric vehicle purchase program, which, which is important for reducing our greenhouse gases. And another thing that actually is going to help is another half a million dollars for incentives for folks to ride public transit ridership. And we have that through our communities with the bus in the Middlebury, the Askin County Rapid Transit Bus running back and forth. So that's good news for that service. And as Stephanie mentioned, I had written down in my notes the census, how important that is. As a matter of fact, the last census in 2010, Pittsford lost 300 people. And it slipped through the cracks, but didn't appeal the count. So I would encourage the select board, if you don't think you have the right numbers at the end of the sentence, census, you have the ability to appeal your count. And you want to have your count as high as you can. Stephanie and I are in the smallest two-member district in the state. We barely qualify for a two-member district. So we don't want to lose what we have. So that's, that's really important. So we'll watch that. And, and, and for the train and the train stop, and I'm sure Representative Jerome would happily build a, a nice train station down there. But you have to remember when the Antrak started from Rutland to Whitehall, Fairhaven was a stop and Castleton was not a stop, not being serviced. But through the efforts of the Castleton folks over there, they, they proved that the stop would be better, serving more people in Castleton. And that happened. They actually dropped off the Fairhaven stop and put in the Castleton stop. So Brandon is not out of the, out of the equation yet. And I'm glad that Dave, you talked to them the other day and we'll keep the pressure on, have a, at least a whistle stop in Brandon. So that's, that, that's important. And I guess that's, well, I want to say thank you to, to the chamber and Bernie for the event this past weekend. You successfully rounded us, all the politicians up into one end of the event. So that was really great. And, and so we did see a lot of people and thank you for that. So, so I guess that's, that's what we have. And we're here for you and any questions you have anytime, feel free to call Stephanie first or me and we'll, we'll see if we can get you an answer.
I have a couple of questions, Butch.
Oh, no.
Well, you had mentioned the, the, the class two grants. So are those the ones that we, the ones we applied for in winter and spring of this year? That, those are the ones that they're looking at?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's something you get about once every three years, you get a pretty decent class two grant of $300,000 or something along those lines.
Yeah, but they're, but they're taking the grant applications that we submitted in January and February this year, right? That's what's
As far as I know.
Good to know. And then, so the interesting thing with the train stop, whistle stop, however we want to call it right now, was when, when I was at the hearings in Montpelier a couple of years ago about this, they were basing it on stops that were at least 15 miles apart. And my argument was that the ones north of us, you know, it's Middlebury, Ferrisburg, Charlotte, I think the old three are right in a row, and then Burlington. So they actually skipped Shelburne too, but Middlebury, or the Ferrisburg and Charlotte ones were not, you know, even close to 15 miles apart. So I brought that up again because they actually mentioned it and said, hey, you know, we're, we're kind of like that spot between Rutland and Middlebury, right in the center. I think it's 16 miles both way, either way, give or take. So hopefully, you know, we see something out of it. And I think it's probably beneficial for us that the passengers, you know, count is kind of down right now. So they're looking at, you know, sort of marketing to build more, from what I gathered. So, but yeah, so we'll see what happens. I guess it doesn't hurt to ask, you know, five or six times. So.
So did, did you talk to Dan De La Brioire? I think that's his name.
It was Dave Pelletier and there were two other people on the call. I can't remember who the, it was at the TAC meeting last week. They were, they were in on that. I can't remember the other two people's names.
Well, we, we can, we can help with that. Any, any way we can, just give us a shout.
All right. Yeah. Yeah. So.
I see Tim Giles itching to get in on this conversation.
No, no, thank you. I'm just thrilled to hear the idea of a, a train stop in Brandon.
Do I see Bernie Carr then?
Yeah, Dave, we have the Union Street sidewalk is going to be completed from there up to the main segment six sidewalks too, right?
Hopefully soon. We just, I'm actually, we're going to discuss this on the next, the next line item, but we're looking at doing that as well. So, yeah.
That's, that's huge because great sidewalks, great lighting, everything right up into the center of town. We can really start marketing that.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
I just want to say one more thing. I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate the chamber and the Downtown Business District and, and Bill Moore's, Bill Moore and his, and all of his, his crew about this weekend. It was phenomenal. It was just a phenomenal event. And I, Friday night I went to the talk at the Brandon Baptist Church. I'd never set foot in that church and it's a gorgeous building. I was really happy to be there and to hear this talk on the abolitionist movement in Brandon. And then to walk down those stairs and sit in the park and, and Pearl, and top of Pearl Street and see the fireworks, I felt like I was in a movie set. It was just unbelievable. And then, then on, then on Saturday was just really fun to be in the park and kind of have lively atmosphere around and see so many. I was really loved, I loved being at that park and seeing all these people I'd never seen before, drive down, park their cars and walk and go to all the businesses and go to all the exhibits and, and all the events that were happening through town. It was really just a wonderful, wonderful weekend. And I, um, thank you. Terrific.
A great showcase for sure. Thank you. Chief Burkell?
Just, just one minute. I just wanted to take a minute to, and I know this is not board exactly, but this is for public opinion, but to, to really thank the efforts of Representative Shaw and Jerome. I don't think that anybody realizes how much time and effort they put in. And this legislative session was crazy. And it was, it wasn't daily, it was hourly. And I think the fact that you see the connections here between our town manager and then our Chamber of Commerce and then just, it really goes to show that the hard work that they do, but they're really connected and they really do represent us well. So I just wanted to say thank you. Yay. Bravo.
Thank you.
Bravo.
Other public comments?
Yes, if I could. This is Brent Buehler. I have a few, few things. First of all, regarding the weekend, Red Clover does such a fabulous job in the park. They, they do just amazing. It's, I live across from it and, and it's so organized and festive. They do a really nice job. I hope they can continue even after the pandemic with some of those activities. Secondly, I'd like to ask Sue if the ballots can be put in the box out front of town, the town hall, or if they need to be taken inside.
Absolutely. You can return your ballot to either of the two drop boxes in front of the town office or at Nashvay School. You can hail your ballot back or you can bring it into the town office. We have a drop box for ballots right up front. So you don't need, we don't even need to get up and take it from you. You can just put it right in the box up front and I clear that out every night and enter those ballots as received and lock them in the vault. So.
Okay, great.
Yep.
The, the, the sheet I received said return to the town clerk, but it didn't say if it was okay to throw it in the box. So thank you. And the last thing is, this may be an isolated incident, but I was talking to someone that I see quite frequently in town that lives in Forestale. And when I asked her how she was doing, she said, well, that's a well, my well's been dry for a few weeks now and apparently they're having some challenges up there that I hadn't heard about. And so it's my understanding the aquifer is below her. She said she had a shallow well, but her neighbor that had a deep well, they even experienced some dry periods on their well. So I don't know if, if anyone else has heard anything like that. I, I, it certainly hasn't been, I, well, I'm conservative with water. It hasn't been on my radar that, I know we haven't had a lot of rain and everything, but I have been planting and seeding. And I don't know if that has an effect on the folks up there and if the aquifer is monitored for a certain level of water. But as we experience these different weather trends, dry winters, dry spring, dry summer, if we shouldn't have a, pay closer attention to that, maybe have a protocol? I don't know. Again, this may be an isolated incident. I don't really know, except for the conversation I have.
So generally, you know, the town is provided with its drinking water and fire suppression water from the Brandon Fire District, which I think we have been told for many years has a well-protected and more than adequate volume supply for the town for most occasions. And I don't think we've heard from the Fire District that any conservation measures have been recommended from them, but I think that they would come from the Fire District. I know that there's someone associated with Brandon Fire District Number Two on the call today, and that is up in the Forestale part of Brandon, the northeast corner. Is there anything up there that you're aware of, Dave?
No, no, not at all. We're, um, we're fine in our development with our, with Fire District Two. I mean, the town, the, the Fire District One water goes, you know, up quite a ways through there. So this must be someone that has their own well. Fire District One actually stops right before the turn into our development. So it makes have a hydrant right out front. So yeah, I mean, unless this, this, there's got to be someone that's, you know, off the municipal system and has a well.
Yeah, they are. She said, they, she said they're off the system, but she, she seemed to feel like some of the town's usage contributed to the problem, didn't necessarily cause it. Again, she had a pretty, she has a shallow well, but she said her neighbors have a pretty deep one. And they experienced some challenges as well. So I don't know.
I know one of our selectmen actually hauls water off of, you know, another, an old town system that was used years ago. And I think they've been fine with water. So I don't know.
Mr. Moore has provided in the chat on the side, for those of you who are looking through the Zoom functionality, he's provided a link to drought.gov. And the link there opens up a map which pukes to indicate that Route Seven, which would be us in Rutland County, is not quite yet in, or no, we are in the moderate drought. Is that right, Bill? Am I reading that right? Yeah, moderate drought. So it's always wise to be conservative, period. Right? No, it's always wise to be conservative with our natural resources. So we can, we can all be careful and judicious. And I think that of course, that the aquifer does recharge itself and there are people who are dependent upon the aquifer who are not getting their water supply through the towns or through the Fire District's system. So yeah, it makes sense to be good neighbors in that way. Thank you, Brent, for highlighting that. And thanks, Mr. Moore, for the information, the very clear map with the different drought zones. Further public comment here tonight? Okay, if not, we're going to move along. We have item five is to consider the 2020 V-Trans bicycle and pedestrian grant support. And Dave alluded to this earlier regarding Union Street. Do you want to describe it in some more detail, Dave? The paper that's in the packet is a draft that is open to edits tonight or reject or adopt, whatever you want to do. But Dave, Dave can tell us what we're talking about here.
So this is for the application I'm looking at doing for the sidewalk grants, the bike and ped grant to continue the sidewalk on Union Street on both sides. As we all know, it's, you know, it's old sidewalk. It's all deteriorating. It's not ADA compliant anymore. It's pretty rough. And we'd like to, it seems like the logical next step after, you know, segment six, that we continue that sidewalk down to the railroad tracks where our other new sidewalk is. And actually in, in the letter here that Seth was so gracious to write up, you know, it does say that there are, there are businesses down there. We have a Rutland County Housing Trust property down there that does, you know, house folks with some, some disabilities. So and actually when I was down there with one of the gentlemen from Rutland Regional Planning, we were watching people come up this, the road with like carriages and baby strollers and stuff because there's just portions of that sidewalk that are destroyed. And Sean and I have looked at it a couple of times and, you know, we were going to try to take the curse out of a little bit of it this year, just to push us through, but this really needs to be redone. It's, it services a lot of the town. We've got, you know, Roster and Church Street down there. Our new sidewalk, like I said, that we just did on the, the south end of Barlow Ave. And so that's, that's what we're looking at. And Regional Planning seems to think that this is a really good project because it will end up as a connector between our amenities in town and, you know, a bunch of other folks that can't really walk there because of the condition of the sidewalk. So excuse me, we're pretty excited for this one. So just looking for a letter of support from the board to put in with, with the application.
Thanks, Dave, for filling out all of the paperwork and for filling out the discussion for the board. So we have some information. What's the pleasure of the board on the application that Dave wants to submit in terms of support from the board?
Yeah, I make the motion for a letter.
All right, Doug, Doug and Tim were both talking there. So let me, let me turn you around again.
I make a motion that we, the board adopt this and add it to the application for funds.
Nice second.
Motion is second. Any discussion or edits or things you want to change around?
The only question I had, Seth, there's only one. It, on the next to last paragraph, it says Union Street's popular bicyclists or whatever, and it parallels U-S Route Seven? Does it, does it parallel it? I don't, I don't, I always thought it ran perpendicular. I thought it ran away from it.
I have always described it as paralleling it because basically it's, it's your other way to get to Pittsburgh, but it's on the other side of the river, you know?
Cool. Thank you.
Further discussion? If not ready to vote, all in favor of adopting the draft letter of support and including it in the grant application for the bike and ped grant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? I believe that was unanimous. So the ayes have it. We'll start into items six, A and B, and then there is a liquor commissioners meeting. So we'll do that before the executive session, as we usually do. So we have the warrant for September 28th. Is there a motion on the first warrant?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Bailey moves to approve. Is there a second? Don't be bashful.
Hold on. I need a lazy Susan in here.
I will.
Second from Coolidge. Are there questions on the bills?
Hold on.
Uh, two, two questions. On the first page, Robert Black, two, two different ones. Two, two questions. On the first page, Robert Black, two, two different ones, the, the exact same amount, exact same description as a duplication? Or, or was there two items that were exactly the same amount on the same day?
So this is part of it comes out of the
Dave, could you spin the computer back to you?
So one of these comes out of our town budget that we've budgeted for economic development. The other one comes out of the DBA line in our budget that we put aside for DBA funds. So the DBA is, but it, the bill was actually $1,800. So between the chamber and the DBA and us, we've split it. For signage.
What, what were the signs?
Um, well, we've got signs that, if you saw the ones in the park, I can actually grab one. There's some out there. So we did new, we did new signs for all the parks. We've been working on these, there are you are here signs. So kind of like a, um, yeah, there, Bill's holding one of the signs up in the door right there. So, um, sort of like directional signs, like we wanted to put one down in our new parking area. That's kind of the you are here and here's where you can go. And so one there, like one in Park Village and like one up in Forestdale, just looking at doing all these things to get folks, you know, sort of directed to where things are happening. So, and Robert Black and Courtney Satz have been working on design for a while. They've come up with some great stuff. So it's, it's been fun to, to work on these things with them.
And one second question on page two. Fourth one down, BSN Sports, $1,250 for soccer balls. Was there more than just soccer balls or did we buy that many soccer balls?
Bill Moore?
We bought that many soccer balls. Because so with the coat, with all the COVID stuff that we've had to deal, we have to send these to these kids with their own soccer ball, like the sharing of balls is not encouraged. So they all get soccer balls.
Dave, I just wanted to thank you for the explanation about the signage. And I just, an aside comment. I, I think that those kinds of signs can be really helpful to building community, you know, in terms of identifying neighborhoods, identifying, you know, what is Central Park? I think that there would be a fair to middling number of newcomers to Brandon and maybe even some lifelong residents of Brandon, who if you said, which one is Kennedy Park, which one is Green Park, which one is Crescent Park? There might be a little trouble there. And anytime we can, Bernie's throwing up his hands in, in desperation. Anytime we can help people to speak a common language, I think we'll, we'll help the community knit itself together even more than we already are. So I think that these are great investment. Mr. Giles?
Yeah, I thought I'd just chime in. I've been active with Robert Black on this Greenways group. And a lot of it's encouraging people to walk the trails in and around the community. And it's really quite a visionary thing that Robert's leading with the potential of possibly getting a trail between downtown and Forestdale and Nashobee School. And I mean, there's just a lot of really cool things that are coming out of that. And that map is very much the core of kind of, of, of the, the inviting people to participate.
My reason for questioning it was more that there was, you know, the exact duplication of the bill seemed questionable. And then if you also go to the bottom of page two, there, there's another one for the downtown park signs for 1,300. So without the information, and I'm not opposed to the signs. It just is difficult to know what we're approving sometimes. That's all. Thank you.
No, that was a good, that was a worthwhile clarification for sure. Kelly Walter?
It might be for the Greenways pamphlets. He just printed the new pamphlets that are updating the walking, running routes. Could that be what that budget line was for?
No. So we had to, we paid Robert and Courtney for the design, when, you know, they put in way more than they built. And then we actually had to buy the signs. So one, one is for, you know, the design, the other one is for the product, the product. So, yep.
Any other questions on the warrants or the first warrant? There's a motion and a second to approve the first warrant. If there's no more questions, ready to vote, all in favor of approval of the first warrant as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. That was unanimous. Item B is the Route seven warrant. Is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the Route seven warrant, $183,000, or $183,520.56 cents.
Mr. Coolidge moves to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second for Mr. Giles. Any discussion on this one? If not, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. Okay. So at this time, we'll recess the select board at 7:57, intending to come back later for the executive session. And we will go ahead and call the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners to order at 7:57. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Giles. Is there a second?
Second.
Doug's second.
From Mr. Bailey? Any changes to be made? If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. Care to take number two and three together as a consent agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Giles moves to take number two and number three together as a consent agenda, approving the minutes and the special event permit. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Second for Mr. Coolidge? All in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. Item four?
Motion adjourned.
Mr. Coolidge moves to adjourn at 7:58. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Giles. It's not debatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Any announcements? We had kind of a long public comment section tonight, but anything else anybody wants to say before the select board does the executive session that we announced?
Bernie just pushed up his hand.
I was saying peace and out, but we do, we do have the Harvest Fest next Sunday from one to four at the Esbrock Field Harvest Fest. We crammed everything from the Chamber Inn on a period of six weeks. It's been a zoo. So thanks for all the help from everybody and all the support throughout it.
And Bernie, the hours are one to four on Sunday?
One to four, Esbrock Park.
Esbrock Park. Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
Could I, I, one more thing. There's, there are petitions going around. They're trying to defund the food service on Amtrak. So since we're talking about rail service, I think you can go on to change.org and sign a petition to continue to fund the food and beverage service.
Thank you Brent. It's news to me. It certainly would tend to not help attract riders if they all had to bring their own lunches with them.
Right.
Anything else tonight? Okay, if not.
I have something.
Yes, I'm sorry, Bill. I didn't see.
There, I, I mean, I think we'll have another meet. Now, I don't know if you guys have, you guys will have another meeting before then, but the, there will be a candidates forum hosted by the Brandon Free Public Library coming up. So be, 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 be on the lookout for that. It's going to be as exciting as it sounds. I'm sure. It's going to be a lot of fun.
That is Wednesday, October 14th, I think, right, Bill?
Yes.
And thank you to the library and Bill for picking that up from the chamber too. We were right out straight and it was a big help.
Excellent. Good collaboration, good teamwork. Okay. Is there a motion to enter executive session per one VSA 313 A3 regarding the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee?
I meant that motion.
Motion for Mr. Coolidge. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Bailey. Any discussion about this executive session? We'll include the town manager plus the board, and I don't think we need to include anybody else.